Okay, I'd like to call our regular board of education meeting to order. If we could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get our meeting started, I'd just like to take a moment. One of our school families, the Trappises, they lost their mother over the weekend. So if we could just take a moment to remember the Travis family in the days ahead. Thank you. Next, our mission statement. Sarah?
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. Do roll call.
Margaret? Here.
Chris?
Here.
Kyle?
Here.
Tracy?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
David?
Here.
And I am here. We have four.
Thank you. Next item is approval of the agenda. Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is approval of our consent agenda items.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Kyle, is it you?
Yeah.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Brian?
Yes, we have one resignation. It occurred right before the Labor Day break and first week of school. Amanda Evans, our three-year-old preschool teacher, has taken on a position in another district. However, we are very lucky to have Karen Kuka here. She has been subbing in that program, and it was a seamless transition. So I want to welcome Karen Kuka to our family. And I can say, when I met with her the first day, very first day of school, she already had her list ready to go of what she wanted to do for that classroom. So very excited to have her as part of our team.
That's great. Excellent. Anybody else? Okay, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is our true blue moment. It's a time that we take every meeting to recognize great things that are going on in our district and individuals in our district. And so this month, we are recognizing our foreign exchange student program.
Good evening and welcome. I am here to introduce our foreign exchange students. I have four of them. I think four here. Five? Come on. Come on up.
I missed her when I came in. You guys pass that down to her, the last one. Our last one.
What I, this year, we have eight foreign exchange students. Thank you. What I've asked them to do this evening is to introduce themselves to you. I asked them to share where they are from because we have a very diverse group this year. I've asked them to share who their host parent are, and I asked them to share something about themselves that no one else knows. So we're going to start right here.
Hey, my name is Mikel Petersen, and I'm from Denmark. And I live with the Clarice family. And something about myself is, I really like the cereal here. The Gatorade. And the movies, in general.
Hello, my name is Andreas Talizer. My home country is Germany. My host parents are Sarah and John Forster, and my amazing host brother is Christopher I play in Germany Team Handball. It's the second popular sport in Germany, I would say, in Europe. I have four siblings, three sisters. One of them is younger, and the other two are older than me. I have one older brother. He was in the U.P. eight years ago. I'm from a town near Cologne. This is pretty close to the Netherlands.
Hey, my name is Nina Tarte. My home country is Germany. And my host parents are Michelle and Chad Coughlin. And something about myself, I play the piano.
Hi, I'm Annika Davis. My home country is New Zealand. My host parents are David Hutchison, which is in the corner over there, and Suzie Hutchison, and she's a pastor at the church by the fireplace? For the fire? Yeah. Something about myself, I get really excited when I go into gas stations and anything with, like, new candy that I've never seen before. Gets me really excited.
Hello, my name is Mina King. My home country is South Korea. My host parents are Amber and Ryan Ostenberg. I'm not good at speaking English.
We actually have three other students, and I'm not sure, because they were all supposed to be here tonight, I'm not quite sure who I have missing. So we have Mina, right? Irene? So we have Irene Martinez. Neely? Neely's here. Andreas is here. Mikell, right, is here. And Annika, right? Annika?
Yeah.
All right. And then we have a Peter Stutigen. He's from Germany. And a Casia Carlson from Sweden. Anyway, we are having a really good time with them, and they're sharing their cultures with us, and we're really enjoying it here at the high school. We would like to welcome them to Richmond, and we'd like to thank all of our host families for having them, and we wish everyone well this school year. Thank you.
Can we just take a moment? Would the host family stand up so everyone knows who you are, please? Thank you very much for opening your homes. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Michon.
I would just like to add a little story with Mina King. I went to their host family, they invited me over, and I had a chance to have something that she made there. It was kimchi, and she said it was just a little spicy. It was spicy. Again, it was great to be there and welcome them into our Richmond community.
That is great. Very good. Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our presentations. Student achievement update.
All right, good evening. I'm excited this year that the state has been able to provide us our M-Step data a little bit more timely than last year, while not quite at the end of the school year like they promised yet. But we are excited to see some of the results that we have, and we have seen some amazing growth in the M-Step. Remember, the test has changed the last three years. This was only the second year that it was adaptive, and our students have adapted themselves to the test and are showing growth, which is an amazing compliment to our teachers, who have been working very hard with them, and our students who are showing very positive impact. As you can see, this is the three years of the M-Step as it has been available, the three years that data has come out. The Richmen are in the blue colors, and in many cases, you've seen over those three years significant growth from our students as you look at third grade, fourth grade. Remember, this is not comparing apples to apples. This is grade level grades. But as we're looking at that, you're seeing significant growth among our students, and in most cases, well above the county and state averages. In mathematics, again, you've seen some growth. We do recognize that this is an area that we are continuing to concentrate on and find areas that we can improve as we work with students. As last year, you committed as a board to help provide some curricular resources. So this will be the first year that we have those resources in place to be able to enhance our math curriculum, so we can continue to see the growth as we move forward. But again, we did very well in all grade levels and showed quite a bit of improvement in some. The science M-Step is only given at three grade levels, grade four, grade seven, and grade 11. And remember, in a few years, this test will change to incorporate our next-generation science standards, which our teachers are already teaching towards right now in making that transition. So when our students are ready to take that test in a couple of years, our students will be there because our teachers have been working on it. But over the past three years, you have seen some, we have seen some growth here in Richmond. The state has also seen growth, but we've really made some improvements as our science. And in some cases, we're even leading the county as we look forward. M-Step social studies, again, given at three grade levels, grade five, grade eight, and grade 11. Still seeing growth. This, again, as a changing test as it has been for the last few years, are, the social studies standards are set to be adopted by the state. They're projecting sometime in October. So we will be working with our social studies teachers to realign our curriculum to those new standards. They have not given us the timeline of when the test will be realigned to those new standards, but that is right now what the state is projecting as to when the standards will come up. SAT. Two years ago, the state switched from the ACT to the SAT, so we only have two years of data on the SAT. But over those two years, we've seen significant progress with a 20-point jump from the first year that our Richmond High School students have taken the SAT to the second year. And that mathematics jump from a 476 to a 494 is a great improvement and just shows that our teachers are continuing to make improvements in those areas that we know that we need a little more work on. So the next set of slides are the public school districts in the county lined up in achievement order, with the blue being where Richmond falls. So you can see that here in third grade ELA, we're second in the county. And in many cases, you'll see that blue bar up near the top, and at least in the top half. Third grade math. Fourth grade ELA. Fourth grade math. Fourth grade science. Fifth grade ELA. Fifth grade math. Fifth grade social studies, one of the areas that we are leading the county. Sixth grade ELA. Sixth grade math. Seventh grade ELA, second in the county. Seventh grade math. Seventh grade science. Eighth grade ELA, second in the county. Eighth grade math. Eighth grade social studies, third in the county. Eleventh grade science, as I said, we are leading the county in the eleventh grade social
I'd just like to point out a couple of things. First, I'm going to start at the elementary school. That staff at the elementary school has done remarkable things in the three years that I've been here. If you recall, when I arrived in the district, we used to have a top-to-bottom ranking, they ranked school, and Lee was not where we wanted them to be. But when you look at what that staff has done in three years, and we've had transition, we've had turmoil, transition in that building, but the staff has been dedicated to doing what's right for kids. And when you look at, you know, just look at third grade and this whole third grade proficiency and holding kids back because they're not, they are, they're right there. They are, it's second in the county? They're second in the county when, three years ago, on the top-to-bottom ranking, we weren't doing so well. They have completely changed route. You look at what they've done in math, when you look at the comparative score, there has been a significant increase. Is it where we want to be? I would say no. I don't think any teacher wants it. But they are dedicated to make it, to make it move. You look at the middle school, and Mr. Bartel spoke about this at the Blue Devil Open House. When you can put all those together, do we have some grade levels that we need to improve? Absolutely. But we are leading the county. Majority of the school districts in the county, we're beating or surpassing them. And the high school, when you look alone, I mean, I can't stress enough, if you can go back to that SAT slide, Mr. Berkmeier?
The county one?
No, just the SAT. This slide doesn't do it justice to what they've done. They have made 20-point gains in the high school in the composite. That's almost unheard of for a district to do that. When you look at the state, they might have made seven county-wise. They made six points. The state maybe six points. But a 20-point gain, that speaks volumes to where we're trying to go within the high school level. When you look at those rankings, that district to the west of us has nothing on Richmond. I don't know what the perception is out there, but when you look at that staff at these buildings, I can't ask for a more dedicated staff. Again, I'll say, are they where we want to be? No. As a staff, we're self-reflected. We're trying to figure out how do we improve? The state's numbers aren't that impressive. And the challenge we face as an organization is the constant evolving at the state level of that assessment. They're supposed to go out for an RFP this year for a new state assessment. So now we're chasing potentially another target. But I can honestly say, and I can't give enough kudos to the staff and the administrative team, the way they rally their team around a cause, it's very impressive. And each of the levels has something to celebrate. And I can honestly, I can say at the last county superintendent's meeting last Wednesday, when you've got Utica schools looking at Richmond's scores, and you've got Chippewa Valley making comments how impressive our scores are, that says something about the culture here at the district. So I want to thank the staff, Teresa and John, and thank you for your leadership for the REA and continuing to rally our teachers to make these impressive goals, because that's what gets our kids into the world beyond work and the colleges beyond work is the preparation they receive from Richmond.
And I'd like to add to that, not only are teachers moving our students forward, they're not satisfied with where we're at either. And they've already taken this data, and at the first meetings of the year, they were digging in to find out where they can improve and what they need to do better. And as we continue to give those resources, as we do our grade level meetings and department meetings, they're finding ways that they are going to move their students even farther and faster. So it's a great district to be a part of because of our teachers and because of the work they're putting in. So kudos to the students and kudos to the teachers.
Okay, next, discussion on commemoration. I knew I would say that. Commemoration of school facilities. This was, I don't know when, August sometime, we gave everybody this to look at, was it? August 14th?
I want a hard copy. I made extra hard copies sometimes.
Does everybody have?
Reading online is, you have a hard copy.
So basically, what we're, what we're looking at here is, we have a commemoration policy. I don't know that we've ever used it. And so as Brian and I had been talking for the last few months, we started looking at what other districts do, and we wanted to have a conversation about, do we as a board, does this work for us? Do we want to look to make our policy, I don't know if the word "better" is the right word, Brian? Or just, you know, because if you, when you read the stuff, you saw, you know, there's processes to get things, facilities named or that kind of thing. So that's where, that's where we're at. We just wanted to have a conversation on what everybody was thinking after looking at this stuff.
This, actually, I've been approached by a couple of individuals in the community about, you know, an idea or concept about naming certain facility. Nothing, nothing at a formal process yet, but that's how this discussion started. Is there a process of naming a, whether it's a building, a facility, a field, and the process? You can see in the packet, it chose a couple of districts in McComb. You'll see some that it's very, I think Utica is the simplest. It just gives the board the authorization. It's a one-liner. And then you see some extensive ones where they have some criteria from, such as Lanz Cruz, where they identify significant contributions this individual has provided the district or community, and some guidelines. When you look at our policy, other than kind of dealing with alcohol and tobacco, there's very vague guidelines on what the individual, you could pretty much name it after anybody. And so that was the direction of the conversation, is do we want to have some type of guidelines for naming facilities of individuals who have done, whether it's something beneficial for the district, have had years of service in the district, have worked? What type of guidelines do you want to put in place for the naming of facilities? That's how it started.
Brian, three of the, three of the districts indicate naming rights in addition to commemoration. Can you kind of take us through what the difference is between just commemoration and then naming rights? Because it looks like there's a contract involved in a five-year period of time.
Naming rights would be if you want the, like Coca-Cola football field, where you identify a vendor or contractor who's going to pay the district money for the naming rights of a facility or a building or?
Or a section of a building.
A section of the building. Typically, just going by my, I don't think I've ever seen any from a school district. You might see it at the college level or definitely at the pro level, you see, especially with the arena from that angle in Detroit, but that's what the naming rights would be. We only have one contract, it's with Coca-Cola regarding the beverage, but it's a county-wide contract, so that's why we only have one beverage that we offer in the district.
Oh, that's a county thing?
That's a county. And the money that's returned is based on the county consortium from that aspect. We don't have to, but it's been a practice. We're not obligated to be in that county.
So does anybody have any thoughts or comments?
I mean, obviously, the NAOLA, the NAOLA language that we have is present in, in other districts. I mean, they just have sort of kept that.
Right.
Because they're just basic. What we have is the NAOLA kind of cut-and-paste choice, and so they have used that as well. I mean, I guess, you know, when I look at the Lanz Cruz, you're pretty specific about a process? In-depth specific about a process? And I, I mean, it seems like there needs to be some process to follow. I guess.
I think so, too.
The Van Dyke School has a subcommittee that reports, and I really like that because sometimes things happen fast, and this gives you time to really take it all in and get the pros and cons of what the benefit to the community is and so on. So I don't think that's in ours, but I'd like to see a subcommittee that would be able to be more encompassing and take it all in.
I'm very much in favor of some kind of process, too. Some, whether it's, you know, forms to fill, something that it's, as opposed to just, you know, someone walks up and says, you know, I'd like to name something after this person without doing a process.
The Lanz Cruz firm looks pretty good at that.
I think so, too.
Right.
That's, that's probably, pretty much, I don't know, was there anyone else that had?
A lot of them, again, it was a conversation that posed to the superintendent. A lot of them at the time when they're posed with this situation, it's up to the current board to decide whether that's a value. Some may delegate it based on their board structure to, as you mentioned, Dave, to a subcommittee of the board to look at and then bring back to the whole board. And then they establish what criteria they're going to have the staff, you know, follow.
Do we think that's something we would be interested in doing? A subcommittee that kind of went through some stuff, brought things back to the board with a direction?
A direction on those?
Are we just talking about a standing committee that would, that would meet whenever a proposal comes in?
Well, first off, I'd like to see us have a committee to, if we, if we want to, you know, like, to Dave's point, put something together, how do we want, how do we want our policy to look? And then from there?
Do we want the building to only be named for a certain amount of years?
Right. Or, you know, do you have to be deceased? Do you have to not be an employee after so many years? There's so many different ways to do it. Do we want to look at doing something like that? And then, yes, I think, then down the road, if we're going to have a procedure, then yes, there would have to be a group that would get these applications, if you will, and look at them down the road.
Because from my perspective on the bigger picture, if you walk around this campus, you'll see a lot of things named for people, whether it's a tree, whether it's the memorial gardens or woods behind by Lee, a football field, I mean, the sign is in the blue shed on the football soccer field. So the question is, you know, from a bigger picture, the maintenance, what happens when that tree, because we do have some trees that die? Do we replace it? And do, you know, does that become an automatic cost to the district? Is it so many years that something's named after? You know, I look at some of the names, and as I'm learning people, I, they don't, there's no connection to me. But someone in the community has a connection because they did something to have, to be honored.
Right.
So, you know, and where does that historical stuff sit? Is something that we want to eventually start putting on our website for the future?
Well, I mean, one of our buildings is named after someone.
Correct.
Exactly.
So one of the three is. And, and when I think about, the football facility was named after someone.
And it's been, it's been Ben Bolt for, like?
Ben Bolt for how long?
A hundred years.
My grandfather.
He did?
It was. Yeah, that's what I remember.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. Yeah, I do remember that.
Yep.
But you have a perfect example on the Bar City baseball field, the scoreboard. The scoreboard was dedicated by, and forgive me, I don't know the family's name, on the old scoreboard.
Spies.
All right. What do we do with it when that one comes down? And you have, because technically, the other policy says, I just put it up for auction and the highest bidder gets it. Well, I don't know if that's what we want necessarily to.
Right.
Just pay to that family with my good.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, communication back to the family as much as you can, I would suppose.
But that doesn't need to be a policy written down.
I think so, too.
Because the other policy on district items would, you know, give a bad effect.
Right.
It's not very, it's sitting in the bus garage right now until we figure out what to do with it.
So if we, if we'd like to do it in the direction of doing a committee, just, if you're interested, let me know, and let's go in that direction for right now. Does that sound?
So a smaller committee to look at these things, build a policy?
Come back with an idea. Come back to the board. Because this isn't something that we have to do, you know, two weeks from now.
We don't have a pressing, anything pressing.
No. But I think it's important to get something together. Good?
So are we looking for a direction or looking for volunteers, I guess?
Volunteers.
If you'd like to volunteer?
It's kind of in my wheelhouse, I like policy and legislation. I'll volunteer for that.
I'm in.
Okay. That sounds good.
Then I will give it to you two, if anybody else shares a name, and we'll set up a date to kind of write the policy to come back.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Public comment portion of our meeting where if someone in the audience would like to address the board, they may do so. You have three minutes to speak. It is not a question in? It is not a question and answer period, but up there at the podium, there should be a piece of paper that if you would like to have a question answered, you can put your name and telephone number on the sheet. Is there anyone who would like to address the board?
Good evening. My name's Teresa Ranger. I wasn't planning on talking, but I had to after that great presentation about the foreign exchange students. So thank you to the school board for that, offering that opportunity. I was excited watching that. I only wish I was at the high school to see what goes on. I think those eight young adults are in for a real treat, but on the other token, so is the student body. I think there's a lot to be said about a program like that. Wonderful that these host families took them in, and I think that there'll be some lifelong friendships formed over the next school year. So thank you for that opportunity for them.
My name is Nick Mathis. I'm sixteen and a senior at the high school here, and I am the team captain of the current first robotics team we have here at the high school. I'm here to talk at the public comment about, to make amends that the robotics team needs help. After our 2016 season, we lost our head mentor, and since then, we've not had an official head mentor. One of our mentors stepped down and helped us on the robot side of things, and Mr. Wamsley helped us throughout the season and did what he could. Obviously, he can't do as much. He's a superintendent of the school district, so obviously, he did what he could for us. But we're barely just getting by. In May of this year, I was selected from our current mentors that we have as the team captain for the upcoming season. I've been taking care of a lot of the work to repairs for this upcoming season, including getting sponsorships, scheduling, and taking care of the demonstration and events and everything else under the sun. The bottom line is, I'm starting to get overwhelmed. It's a lot of work on me and as a full-time student that plays the varsity sport and is required to have a job. Although I'm not here to complain about the workload that I've had and what I've been doing, I'm here to ask the board for each one of you individually to help us find a head mentor or coach. They don't need to be someone with any one robot experience. We need someone who can manage and organize the team. We need help, and if things continue the way they are, the team could be in jeopardy of folding, and there would no longer be this successful team here. Because as of right now, we have six mentors, and four of them are leaving after this year. So it would be extremely difficult if we can't get anyone to come in to be able to help us out. There's a very well chance that there will no longer be the first robotics team at the high school. Thank you for your time. Do you have a paper that I can write?
I got you.
I got something if you want to write.
Can we just get more specific somehow, Brian, of what that specifically would look like? The time involved, any of that kind of stuff? So if we go and ask people, we can give a clearer picture of what this is?
I'm going to ask Nick to talk. The time involved is, I mean, you have the off-season stuff of robots and gathering the sponsorship to the team, and it's not just a couple-month period, it's a twelve-month commitment. But the main, the main part of it begins with the launch in January, when they identify what the competition is, and then that build system. These students and the mentors are there, I would, probably seven nights a week.
Seven nights a week till one o'clock in the morning, and Saturdays, we're there at nine to eleven. Thirteen-hour days.
That builds isn't getting it.
Now, but see, the thing is, is like with that mentor, they wouldn't have to be there every day, maybe once a week for a couple hours to check in. We just need someone to organize it. We need someone to do the permission slips, take care of writing check requests, taking care of depositing checks, taking care of setting up events and contacting people for like, such as like the science at the Lee School. That's just one of the examples that we would need help with. You know, I don't have a problem doing it, but it's just the fact that it's extremely difficult on me. Like this past week, I just had to arrange all of our good old day stuff, all of the parade. I mean, it's difficult. It's hard to get out to people when, you know, you have football, and then you've got to work around that and trying to work around your work schedule. I'm getting overwhelmed.
The twenty percent on the day of the events. There's an issue, and they're looking for that one. The kids, I mean, they, you know, it was-
We've never had a problem, but of course, we don't have a mentor or something, and that happens, so.
That's really the challenge, is that organization. We've tried on the business end by use the district purchasing card to try to get some, so it's not such a time-consuming process for the mentor that when they need the materials, there's not a long-
That was helpful, though.
To get it.
It was extremely easier than having to make a purchase order and stuff, so. There's stuff that we've done to help us out, it's just that we need someone to really-
Right.
If there's any other information, I left my contact information. I have no problem coming in and making a meeting with it, and so don't be afraid to contact me about it.
We have posted it. We've posted several times to see if we find, but we have not, and had someone choose the position.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next. Board of Education Student Representative Report. Haley.
Okay. Well, I'm going to start off by saying all three buildings have had a great start to the school year. The Blue Devils' Days went well at each building. I was lucky enough not only to attend the high school Blue Devils' Days, but I was at the middle school Blue Devils' Days, too. So those both ran smoothly. The Lee School, they have, they're just getting into the swing of things, so not, nobody's doing too much right now, but there's a book fair right around the corner at the Lee School that's October ninth to thirteenth. And then if you jump to the middle school, their web program kicked off, and that's where everyone belongs, and that's where the eighth graders are paired up with the fifth grade. I think there's two eighth graders for a group of like, I don't know, about ten, ten fifth graders. So that kicked off last week. And then they had a middle school boot camp where they discussed using the technology, the PBIS program, collaboration, organization, and time management, stuff like that. Also, this week at the middle school, just as they start everything off, they're having their student council votes and student survey and an anti-bullying overview. The high school, the seniors are getting a chance to paint their parking spots this Sunday. We're all really excited about it. It's the first time, we got the idea from other schools in our area, and it also acts as a fundraiser for the student government because there's a thirty-dollar fee to paint the parking spot, and that'll go towards other senior activities that we'll do later. So that's super fun. The seniors are in charge of bringing in their own paint, and they had to have their design approved, and everyone has to have their stuff in by Friday, and then they show up Sunday morning to paint. Our clubs are just starting off. A couple of our clubs have, were working summer, like the robotics club and our mock trial team, we actually met a couple times over the summer. We're getting serious about it this year. And then the National Honor Society, of course, is doing their summer hours. And student government meets this Thursday to plan out homecoming. That's when we decide the theme and everything. Homecoming is October fourteenth. Also, our school newspaper, we decided, me and Nick actually decided that it was time to get a new logo for the Blue Devils Advocate because the student who drew the logo graduated, I want to say about six years ago. So Ms. Belf is going to have a drawing contest to see what the new logo will be. And finally, all the fall sports are hard at work, cross-country, boys soccer, boys tennis. And the football team, our football team is three and all right now, and we have a game against Yale this Friday at home. That concludes my report.
Is Mrs. Mashon painting her parking spot?
You know, I hadn't thought about it, but I-
Really?
No, I didn't. I thought it was the kids, but you know, I might be willing, but my spot's back here.
Dave and I would do that.
All right. That'd be, I'd like to see that.
Approve people.
Yes. You should.
Well, that's fun.
Thank you, Haley. Next, Superintendent Legislative Update.
As Haley said, the start of the school year went extremely well. Again, I can't thank all the staff enough. Smiles and excitement on kids' faces as they walk through the doors. I can't thank Terry and Pam enough for the centralized registration, getting kids registered in their classes. Last Friday was the cutoff date for school of choice. We had them up to the eleventh hour registering for school of choice. You know, and you look at just head count, as I reported to the board, head count, which is in our FTE, we have more students sitting in Richmond schools today than we did back in February. So that's a good sign of the upward swing that we're projecting. And that, those results and the stuff that you're hearing from Haley that's going on in the building is just going to keep the momentum going and so forth. I will say, Haley, when you do have that new logo, if you get anything what we get with the education foundation, it's going to be a very difficult decision because it's getting on to pick the logo. This Sunday is the Romeo to Richmond Run. I invite everybody in the community to participate, and if you'd like to come to the Richmond Watering Station, we will be at Omo Road and Thirty-four again. They usually take about five to six people. No, I think three to four is probably really what you need, but anybody's welcome to join us. We have a good time. We're going to put some decorations out this year and so forth to promote Richmond's spot. It's right on the borders, you're coming into Richmond, so you're welcome those runners.
Time is here.
We have to be there at eight to set up. The runners probably get there around nine o'clock-ish, and then we're probably done by ten, our spot, because as the cleanup crew heads down, we can clean up the go. So it's, I would say if you want to commit your time by eleven, you're done. You are probably back home by eleven.
Just be very careful. There's some very serious runners.
Yes.
And bring bug spray. I remember last year, the bugs were out. I did it with Brian last year, and the bugs were out, so.
Bug spray, and there are serious runners, and-
Yeah. They learned that pretty quick.
But it's fun watching the families come to our spot and cheer on the runners, and then they drive to the next spot and cheer on them. And we have a lot of our staff that typically run in it, and some of our students have run in. So if anybody's interested, I'll put the call out to the staff tomorrow, but it's this Sunday. From a legislative update, not much is going on. They're just now getting back into session and working. As of today, I got a notice that the main focus from the Speaker of the House and the Senate is they are trying to push through a bill that would label schools A to F from a great poor grading system. That was talked about last year, but it didn't have a lot of mental. Mental, that seems to be their focus this year. And then the other aspect that we're looking at is paying close attention to is what happens with the state assessment. With the RMP that's scheduled to go out in October, the challenge that we're facing is by law, next year's assessment is supposed to be tied to forty percent of people's evaluation if it's a brand-new assessment. I just believe it's another way they're trying to set public schools up for failure. But I can say probably really with confidence, this staff rises to the occasion. I don't think they let anything get to them, because as you can see, they haven't. So other than that, there's not much going on in the legislative front. Again, a great start to the school year. Our numbers look good. We have a lot of school of choice that have joined us this year. You can see around town, we have the signs that are going around. Our next part of the campaign is going to be a video campaign talking with staff, students, and parents about why they choose Richmond Community Schools, so that's all I have.
Next, items of interest from members of the board. Anyone?
I'm sure anyone who walked in the parade is going to say this, but it was just great to see the teachers and staff out there and administrators. It was awesome. It's always cool to see the kids run up to the teachers or, well, really, the teachers run up to the kids because they're not allowed to come on the street. And just excited to see them, and also seeing the teachers in the children's parade, too. It was nice to see that. Very nice.
I, you know, I live out in a township. I live out in Columbus Township, and there are not too many times, kind of over the course of things, that you, when you live out in a township, you sometimes feel a little disconnected, you know? If that makes sense? You can come into the city of Richmond, and you see yard signs in people's yards and all that kind of thing. These "I choose Richmond" yard signs are all over Columbus Township, and my neighbors have them. My parents have one in their yard because they were excited about it, and so they wanted one in their yard. It just has been a really awesome thing to watch that sort of grow and evolve, and not just be a City of Richmond thing, but an entire school district thing. And so I'm so thankful to the leadership and for that committee to make that happen, and it's just really wonderful to watch that build and grow and see that happen.
All I have to add is if anyone's going to buy raffle tickets for the Fireman's Raffle, get them from Sarah because they're all winners, and I ended up picking up a big TV set, so thank you for that.
Yep.
I had an in, so thanks.
Yeah, right. I didn't pick the winner, so.
I had a chance to make it to all three Blue Devil Days and the dinners for the new families that are new to our district. I want to say, I want to say thank you to Sue for a great job with the food. It was nice meeting all of them, and then a thank you to all the administrators and the teachers for a great job all three nights, and just having all the kids get excited to start a new school year and be in our district. So thank you.
Yep. It's always fun seeing all the people moving around during Blue Devil Days, all the action that's happening. It's always really exciting. I think parents' smiles are bigger than the kids, but, in some cases, but it's always, it's always a job well done by everybody that does Blue Devil Days. Absolutely.
Which was evident when Mr. Koshin asked the kids who's excited to come back to school, and he asked the parent, who's excited if your kids-
They were way louder.
And you broke the sound barrier, so.
Yeah, they were way louder. Absolutely. Okay, next. I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session for attorney-client communication.
So move.
Support. That was Chris, and then Sarah. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, and we won't be coming back with the decision, with any kind of decision.